Anybody else have comments?
Our city attorney.
Oh, the city attorney.
I was just gonna say that I don't know, obviously, the council isn't necessarily as well-versed in all of our ordinances, but just so the council is aware, we do have two local ordinances that criminalize both the use and possession of non-narcotics marijuana, and we also have paraphernalia ordinance, and we regularly enforce those on a local level, I would say, on a weekly basis. Additionally, and unfortunately, Detective Sergeant Kern isn't here because he usually spearheads this, we do a lot of narcotics forfeiture, which includes marijuana at the local level.
Great. Great information. Detective Kern's gave our Mayor Youth Council a training before this session, that was their session at five o'clock today, so they had opportunity to speak with him and some of the various things he is involved in, so I appreciate that legal feedback. Anything else? If not, the night's getting long, my students had to go. I should say, Shai Choriano here, that didn't get a chance to introduce herself, is currently a sophomore at Marshall High School, and is an honor student, and so she does a lot of speaking on behalf of Ufishers, along with our council, and this is all part of the Mayor Youth Coalition. She's also the president of the Joy Group that the city manager operates with. And this is all part of the training that we do as far as the use of recreational drug use. We don't train just in information about marijuana's bad for you and all of that. We're also training academics, and that's one of the reasons why, for me, as an agency director, my partnership with the Marshall Public School District is paramount to all the kids that go to my Kids at Hope Center, go to Marshall Public Schools, all of them. And so the idea about who and where I stand, as we look at education, I go where the youth lead me, and the youth lead me to, this is where we go, and this is what we do. So part of our training for marijuana and prevention deals with educational achievement. That's why we're still interested in what Andy has to offer, as well as other different things that helps us understand about how this issue is gonna be played out, not just in the courts with marijuana, but also the things we're doing with our educational system.
I would be remiss if I didn't comment on this situation, because being a form of drug addict or dope addict, however you want to use it, from my experience, being in that element, most of the people started off smoking the marijuana as a recreational drug, peer pressure, and I started off with wine, Boone's Farm, and as we graduated, I graduated in powder cocaine, crack, heroin, opium, I don't know what else I used, but anyway, we graduated totally from the wine, marijuana, cocaine, all the way. So for medicinal purposes, it's been used since the Native Americans got here from the plants. However, medicinal use is one use, recreational is another. I'm a living witness to how it destroyed my life, you know, and I'm not gonna cry, but I'm asking you kids, don't start with nutter, not even alcohol.
And nutter's the introductory drug, so it was a gateway drug for you to all the different...
Everybody I kicked with, ain't just me, I ain't gonna go back, come on.
Yeah, I would agree. Okay. Anyway, thanks for your time, and thanks for your comments, and I appreciate it. Also, too, I'd be remiss to say there's a breakfast for our middle school kids, sixth, seventh, eighth graders, at the school Friday, and I think city manager sent out an invitation for you guys to be invited to make comments in regards to that. There's also a breakfast, which is costing me money from the standpoint of that, so if you don't come, even though Andy owed me a lunch or...
I do owe you a lunch.
So anyway, you are invited. We have three days, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, a lot of activities at the school on Thursday, but Friday, if you're free and wanna come up and make comments for the kids, we would appreciate it. I think it's from nine fifteen to ten thirty. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on, citizens' comments. Persons addressing the city council shall limit their comments to agenda items only and to no more than five minutes. Proper decorum is required. Are there any comments on the agenda this evening? Seeing none, moving on.
Yes?
Yes, I agree mostly with everything that was said.
Wait a minute. First of all, your name?
My name is Mark Anthony Lane.
Address?
You have to excuse me. Four oh seven West Cass Street.
And it has to do with the agenda itself?
The agenda at hand of the whole entire meeting?
Yes.
Yes. Yes, everybody had good comments, and we have to work together, just as we have a gentleman in Albion College, real soon for the kids. Since Albion funding, we should fund the kids now and make them more safety, and then that way they will get to know, and the officers will get to know the children, 'cause they're all combined together, and it'd be an organization. Let the kids build their school, and hopefully they get, have a family, and their kids will go to that school. And let the kids, we ask for like ten percent of whatever's coming in, from whatever jobs that's coming in, and grant it to the children, and let them pay their tithes and help build this city, 'cause they are from all of us, and we do owe this city. This is a wonderful city, Albion College is contributing a lot, and we owe this city, and the only way that we're gonna do it is just like Mr. Bonner said, is with a higher education for the children now, 'cause we have beautiful out-form contractors at Albion College, professors, and they can train the kids. If the job ain't done right, pare it down until it gets right, and it'd be a growing thing, and the children will pay for the city. For they owe this city, for they need their education, and they want the city back. So everybody has to contribute, and that's just, I'm not, excuse me, I'm not well-smoking in matters, but I just wanted to voice my opinion.
Okay. Thank you.
And the legal marijuana and stuff, wait till you're twenty-one. Be grown and see if you can still keep a word to yourself.
Okay. Thank you. And before I go on to the consent calendar, Dr. Davis and then will be here after the meeting tonight if anybody has any questions. The consent calendar from this point stands as approval of regular session, minutes from January four, 2016.
So moved, support.
Moved and supported. Were there any questions? Roll call, or excuse me, boys vote, own favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, the same. Passes. Items for individual discussion. A, request approval to your labor agreement contact with ASME's Union, which is the DPW.
So moved.
Support.
Moved and supported. Questions?
Mayor and council, I do want to bring to your attention, in front of you, is a page that is corrected in that contract, I believe it's page seven, we just needed to correct the typo in regards to the dates. So it's effective for the dates of January third, 2016, through September thirtieth, 2017.
Thank you.
And as an overview, this reflects the twenty-one month contract, and that includes a two percent increase both 2016 and 2017. And it was ratified by the union.
No further questions, no further admits to it. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
Decker?
Yes.
Kraus?
Yes.
French?
Yes.
Barnes?
Yes.
And Mayor Domingo.
Yes, thank you. B, request approval of two-year labor agreement contract, 2016 to 2017, for POAM, Union Clerical Finance Department.
So moved, support.
Moved and supported. Are there any questions? Seeing none, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
Decker?
Steve.
My husband's job?
This one is at POAM?
No, this is, no.
It was?
No. No. TPOAM slash ACA.
He didn't say that, don't I?
Yeah, I know.
I'm sorry.
He didn't say that.
My mistake.
Councilmember Kraus?
Yes.
French?
Yes.
Barnes?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
And Mayor Domingo.
Yes, thank you. C, request approval of two-year labor agreement contract, 2016 to 2017, for POAM, excuse me, Union Public Safety Officers.
Support.
Moved and supported. Are there any questions? Seeing none, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Decker?
Sorry, I have to interject. Now, obviously, Councilwoman Decker indicated that because she's married to a public safety officer, she's abstaining because she'd have a direct financial interest. Pursuant to our charter, the remaining members of the council have to excuse her from that vote.
I make a motion that we...
I support that motion that we excuse Becky Decker from this vote, given the potential conflict of interest for this vote.
It's gotta be a roll call?
Yes.
Roll call vote for excusing councilperson Decker.
Okay. Councilmember Kraus?
Yes.
French?
Yes.
Barnes?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
And Mayor Domingo.
No. Yep. Okay, now we'll go back, and without Ms. Decker, we'll go ahead with the contract for POAM Union, which has been moved and supported. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember French?
Yes.
Barnes?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Kraus?
Yes.
And Mayor Domingo.
Yes. D, request approval, resolution 2016 dash oh four, to appoint Kenneth Snyder as city of Albion's representative to the Calhoun County Consolidated Dispatch Authority, January first, 2016, through December thirty-first, 2017.
So moved, support.
Moved and supported. Are there any questions?
I don't know, again, this is a number of years ago, 'cause that was back when I was previous city manager, but have we received any reports from them about how everything is going? Because I know there was a...
Hi, Evan.
Okay.
Well, we received the monthly reports relative to the number of calls for both our community, as well as all of those that are participating in the Consolidated Dispatch Authority.
Okay.
If you want to see those, I can share those with council, but we do receive those every month.
Okay, thank you.
Might as well add it to the packet. No further questions, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember French?
Yes.
Barnes?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Decker?
Yes.
Kraus?
Yes.
And Mayor Domingo.
Yes, thank you. E, request approval of resolution 2016 dash oh five, for fiscal year 2016 budget amendment.
So moved.
Support.
Moved and supported. Cheryl, would you like to comment on that, please?
Mayor and council, in regards to the contracts, labor agreements that you just approved, that includes the two percent increase, so that requires that we make a budget adjustment, because as you indicated, you did not want that to come from our fund balance, but we did make some modifications in each of the general funds to accommodate those two percent increases, and that's what's reflected in this amendment.
You took all the two percents out of the general fund?
No.
Okay.
We took them wherever the salaries were applied, so if you see the spreadsheet here.
Okay.
Okay.
They came out of the departments?
Right, so it came from the major street funds, local street fund, recreation fund, solid waste, sewer, water, equipment, both fund in, and all of them, where the salaries come from.
Okay, yes, okay, what we asked.
Yes.
Okay. Any further questions? Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Barnes?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Decker?
Yes.
Kraus?
Yes.
French?
Yes.
And Mayor Domingo.
Yes, thank you. F, request approval, resolution 2016 dash oh six, Boy Scout Troop Number One fifty-eight, overnight camping request at Victory Park.
So moved, support.
Moved and supported. Who has the information? I know what has to do with the... Okay.
Well, mayor and council, I think we have some representatives here, I don't know if they want to address you briefly, but they have a request to have an overnight camping event at Victory Park on Saturday, January thirtieth.
I'm Dave Huber, I live at four twenty-one Brockway Place, and I'm Scout Master Troop One fifty-eight. Boy Scouts of America is supposed to be a boy-run troop, or I mean, youth-led organization, so I'm gonna defer this to our Assistant Senior Patrolly, Mike Gant, and he's gonna give you the specifics of what we wanna do.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Mike Gant, I live at three thirteen Washington Street. We are requesting permission to spend overnight at Victory Park in front of the shale for our polar bear camping, which every scout that attends will receive a polar bear camping badge.
Any questions, council? Yes?
Due to my situation, I would like to ask, there will be a couple of dog supervisors standing overnight with the guy?
Yes, there are two certified, there will always be at least two certified adults at all times.
Just make sure the city manager makes the name.
Yes.
I presume that one thing that will happen at this campout is that there will be fires set?
Yes, we have a cut-out barrels that we have, we raise up on cylinder blocks, so there'll be no harm to the ground.
And are we going to be, by approving this resolution, we will be basically providing exemption from the existing ordinances about fires in the park?
Exactly.
Okay.
Just being in the park after dark.
Oh, right, I hadn't thought of that. Yeah, 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 okay.
Looking for matches?
Yes. I think it's a great idea.
I think it'll work.
How many of the scouts will be participating in this?
Well, at the moment, we have a register of twenty scouts, but more than likely, it won't be that many, but it's a maximum of twenty scouts.
Okay, so some kids might, you know, decide that they don't wanna get their polar bear badge.
Right.
May I ask the date?
It is January thirtieth.
January thirtieth?
Yes.
Right before the sled race, the next morning.
Yep, okay.
Oh, that's good.
If there is no further questions...
Mayor and council, I would just like to also comment that the Greater Albion Chamber of Commerce and Visitors Bureau is making available their porta-potties for these people.
Oh.
Yeah, but they'll have facilities overnight as well.
Which we are very grateful for. Okay.
So, my park staff.
If there is no more, we'll have a roll call vote.
Councilmember Reed?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Decker?
Yes.
Kraus?
Yes.
French?
Yes.
Barnes?
Yes.
And Mayor Domingo.
Yes. You're approved. So, thank you. Okay, G, request approval, resolution 2016 dash oh seven, Greater Chamber of Commerce, Visitors Bureau, cardboard classic sled race, request for Victory Park.
So moved, support.
Moved and supported. Are there any questions?
No, I worked with my grandson and his son last weekend, and we have hours already.
Okay, cool.
Are you soliciting votes already?
What's the weather?
All right, moved and supported. Let's go ahead with a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
Decker?
Yes.
Kraus?
Yes.
French?
Yes.
Barnes?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
And Mayor Domingo.
Yes, thank you. Discussion update on Austin Avenue.
That's my item. In your package, you received an update from John Tracy, which is excellent. However, I would just like to see the abatements in the rear buildings on these properties in the entire block. Check, I was up there recently, and I'm seeing some things that I think need some attention. It's a business district, it's zoned as a business district, and I still feel to increase the capacity to sell that property or make it attractive to the business people who are coming in from our industrial park, that we be diligent in asking that that be inspected, and taking care of all of our ordinances. Thank you.
Okay. City managers' report?
Thank you, it's been a very busy year already. One thing I do want to remind you again, as Mr. Bonner had indicated, and a sheet is at your desk as well, is that on Thursday and Friday, we will be having a number of festivities to send off our sixth, seventh, and eighth graders, and in particular, the mayor and council have been invited to the breakfast, provide some motivational comments with the young people, and that's on Friday at nine fifteen a.m. until ten thirty, so if you're able to attend, you're invited and welcome. Also, we're really thrilled, on Thursday, we will have our Congressman Kildy here, he will be taking a tour of the city, and he's looking at, in regards to his legislation, which is related to the neighborhood stabilization funding, and so we're going to be talking with him, as well as with representatives from the land bank who help coordinate this, and our county treasurer, to try to find ways in which we can try to eliminate blight as well as rehabilitate properties in our neighborhoods, and to make certain that Albion can be considered for those fundings. It usually goes to larger municipalities, but we want to make sure that we're on the radar in regards to our needs, and in particular, we do want to show them some properties such as Dow Ripple and...
Union Steel.
Union Steel, which require a big ticket in order to try to get those back into a place where we can put something there that's more useful, productive for the community, so we're looking forward to welcoming Congressman Kildy on Thursday. And just today, I also had a meeting over at the chamber with representatives from Southwest Michigan Community Development Corporation, and Mr. Bill Phillips, and they also are looking at ways in which they can bring resources here to help with rehabilitation of properties, new construction, as well as loans for people who are interested in trying to rehabilitate their properties. So we're trying to get some resources here to help people to maintain their properties, and so we're really excited about some of these new initiatives and opportunities, and we'll give you some more updates on that. Today, I also emailed to you some information in regards to resources that are available for those who need emergency housing, as well as those facing homelessness, so we'll be getting a presentation from some appointed upcoming meetings, but I just wanted to at least look at that, that there are some resources, in case you do encounter any individuals who are in need of those types of services.
Thank you.
And I do believe that concludes my report.
Thank you. Any questions of the city manager? Seeing none. Future agenda items? Yes, Cheryl?
I think we need to start talking about the streets for 2016, which ones will be repaired, which ones won't. I'm getting questions, even though the potholes are filled with snow right at the moment, they haven't gone away, and I guess I'd like to be able to answer some citizens' questions, so I think we need to start looking at that.
Eric Garrett?
We're supposed to have, I guess, quarterly EDC reports, so I don't know, maybe do that maybe in February, or when, but just to put that back on the radar.
On which? The EDC?
Yeah.
Okay.
Is there any information in particular you would like from them?
What they're doing, any, I guess, yeah, what they're doing, their plans are for the year, I don't know if their board has set any goals, but I think that would be a good thing to see, you know, what goals has the board set for this year.
Yes. I'd like to ask, Colin, through the council, is it necessary that we get a legal opinion from you concerning the legal opinion we received from the district library concerning the annexation and the effects that it have on the library?
You're talking about the opinion that, and the other, for giving, because the firm name escapes me out of the head of the, talking about the multi-page packet. I reviewed it, and I would concur with their legal assessment. So if you'd like something in writing from me to that effect, I'm happy to do that, but I did review it, and it is accurate.
Well, for me, if you find time to do it, it doesn't be a rush, just, you know, email me something with your opinion, so I can share it when I go out to try to get the people to vote for annexation. Thank you. Yes, Cheryl?
Cheryl, and the councilmember Barnes, or excuse me, councilmember Brown's request for the EDC to give us some updates, could we hear about the food hub, and also, what's the status of the project of the asphalt plant?
Oh, right. I think the last thing we heard about that, didn't he have some health issues, and was, we haven't heard anything?
He opened a plant in Litchfield, last I knew.
I'm sorry?
He opened a plant, and he bought a plant, I guess, in Litchfield, so I know he's been running that, he had some health issues, he had, he'd lost his wife and things like that, so I'm not quite sure where it sets at this point in time either. I'd like to know if there has been any interest in our four twenty-five area at all, not just for the asphalt plant, but for anybody.
Right.
I think there's a lot of stuff going on downtown that I think needs to be addressed from the EDC, and maybe possibly the DDA, because they're working that together jointly to find out what's going on with our buildings and things like that. I think we got a report on the one next to the Taco Professors?
Yes.
I think we got an update on that, that that building is now secure at this point, or thereabouts, that we don't have to worry about that.
Right, it's not the roof caving in.
I think maybe some update on the one oh one building, which is...
I can do that, if you want it.
You know, right over here, what's going on there, I know they've been working on that pretty much all winter, so I think just in general, an update on a lot of things that are going on, you know, with everything that's going on, and who's contributed to what's coming up in the near future.
Yeah.
Oh, I just remembered one thing.
Yes?
As part of the expansion of the cooperative agreement, there was some concern and question relative to the after-school care available to the students who might be coming back from Marshall to Albion for that period of time before the K through five are released, so basically from three to about three forty-five, and we had a meeting today, and I'm very pleased to say that at least the Recreation Department will be stepping in to provide some open gym activities for them, and it'll be in place starting Monday, and we'll be looking to even expand that, hopefully, to some additional programming with some other partners.
Good. Good to hear. We have nobody absent, so at this point in time, citizens' comments, person addressing the city council shall limit their comments to no more than five minutes, proper decorum is required. Are there any citizens' comments this evening? Come forward, do your name and address, please.
Sonia Brown, seven thirteen Orchard Drive. I'll be very brief, I just wanna thank the council for your concern and your involvement with our current state of our Albion School District. I think it was great to have Dr. Davis here tonight to present, because I know a lot of people are watching this at home, and will watch it on the internet, and I just want to encourage our citizens to come out to school board meetings every second Tuesday of the month at seven p.m. at the Albion Community School Library. Come out, get informed, ask questions, make sure you thoroughly understand the information that's been presented to you. A lot of things are constantly changing, but I'm asking and pleading for this community to come out and get informed for yourselves. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Brown, if I could get clarification, your next meeting will actually be on a Monday, is that correct?
It will be on a Wednesday, it's a work session. The second Tuesday of every month are our official meetings. Work sessions are less informal than our regular meetings, but usually those are the first Tuesday of every month at seven p.m., but because of the M.O.K. convocation, we will be in February meeting the first Wednesday at seven p.m. Thank you. Yes, Councilman Barnes?
Have you had a chance to talk to Mr. Dunkland?
Regarding what?
One more question.
I mean, I talked to him, I've seen him.
One more question.
Okay, thank you.
One more question. Okay.
I'm David Farley, I'm not a resident of the city, but I'm a resident of Albion, and I just would like to commend the city council for taking time to deliberate, to hear about the report from Dr. Davis, and to deliberate on this. the report from Dr. Davis and to deliberate on this. One issue that seemed to be a concern to people in Albion is the loss of control, local control. And if I picked up on one of the comments by Randy Davis, Marshall has a thousand voters, and Albion has eight hundred voters, and if this takes place, the Albion voters will have a voice on all of the school issues that take place, not only in our community, but in Marshall also. So maybe Marshall's giving up a little bit of local control by inviting us in, but I do thank the city council for taking the serious consideration on this issue.
Thank you, Dave.
I'm sorry, February is a different month for our board, so I wanna make sure I get the February meeting dates correct, okay? I'm sorry. Our work session will be Wednesday, February third, seven p.m. at the Albion Community School Library, and our regular meeting in February will be Monday, February eighth, at seven p.m. at the Albion Community School Library. That meeting will take place on the eighth, because the ballot language for annexation is due on the ninth. So for sake of transparency, I wanna explain why. Thank you.
All right. Okay.
Hi, my name is Mark Anthony Lane again, and I'd like to discuss with the council, can it be that officers write a ticket for about a thousand, two thousand dollars for people parking across the sidewalk for the children, and people in the hoverhens, they can't get down the sidewalk, and it's forcing the kids to go on the street where everybody is on, whatever they're on, from medicine to their drinks or whatever, and it's keeping the children in the streets, which the office has been doing their best to get them out the street. Parents are getting mad 'cause their kids getting tickets, then you gotta pay it 'cause they're walking in the streets. Well, they need the ticket. Well, the people across sidewalk need a ticket as well. So he said, have the officers enforce that, 'cause that'd be bringing more money to the community, or the kids may turn into super stunts and wanna go to Hollywood and be a stunt man, and just start running into the people's cars, jump to the hospital and get paid, but it would be better if the ticket be written just for the respect of the elders and the kids, so that they can at least freely go up and down the street to the store, and there's ditches and humps and all this is around. So that would be a big help to the community, and it would bring more money to our city as well.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
If there is no more comments, I'll ask for a...
So moved, support.
We do.
All in favor?
Aye.
Say aye. All opposed, say say. Thank you all very much.